Everyone, and welcome to tonight's September 3rd City Council meeting. I say that because it's already September. So we'll call the meeting to order, and first item of business here is vacations. I don't know if we have anybody here from the EAM tonight? If not, would you mind, Bob? Join us in prayer, and then we'll do the flag ceremony afterwards.
Dear Lord, we ask for your presence tonight. We ask for your guidance and your wisdom to help us conduct the business of the city, help us make good decisions that are fair and beneficial to all of our community members. Please watch over our first responders, police and fire especially, that often have to go into harm's way in order to serve our community. We ask also that you watch over those people that live on the east coast of the nation as the hurricane makes its way up the east coast, and also comfort those in the Bahama area that have been injured and suffered damage due to the hurricane. We also ask for your blessing on all of our servicemen and women, especially those overseas that are in dangerous settings. Lord, we ask you all of these things in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Donna. Let the roll call show that everyone is present.
So noted.
Mayor McFarland, regarding the minutes, I'd like to move to approve the City Council regular meeting minutes from August 19th, 2019, and accept for the record the healthcare benefits trust board of trustees meeting July 12th as they're presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. Next is claims against the city.
Mayor McFarland and I move for approval of claims against the city for August 14th through the 27th, 2019. Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, claims are approved. Meeting agenda approval. I am going to make one change. We're going to move the reports from item N, and we'll move them to just before item M, which is executive session. Anybody else have any changes? Okay, to move. Anybody seconded?
Seconded.
Okay, we've moved and seconded to approve the change in the meeting agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Next item on the agenda is that we have a special presentation from our friends at the RC Flyers who I see over here. You guys want to come up to the front? Do you want me to come down?
Yeah.
I'm not really prepared tonight because what I'm going to present to the city took me by surprise. I've been a member.
You're always prepared.
No, not really. I've been a member of the Academy of Model Aeronautics for longer than I can remember. And I didn't even know they had the award that we received. I think it was seven and a half, eight years ago, I came before this body and asked you to be kind enough to trust me and me assist the lands who could provide an airfield and recreation for people and try and get back to the community. At that time, I had no idea what this had grown to. Last year, we won what was called a Gold Level Leaders Club Award, which I presented to the mayor, and he keeps in the city. That was because of the facilities that we have, which in my opinion are some of the top in the state, in the nation, because out of about 2,400 clubs in the United States, I think only 154 had been ever given that Gold Level Leaders, 158 had ever won that Gold Level Leaders Club Award. I received a call a few months ago from the Academy of Model Aeronautics Executive Director, and it was told that someone had put our name in, our club's name in nomination, for an award of excellence. Again, I didn't even know what that was. Apparently, this award started in 19, where is it here? 1990. And prior to us receiving it, since 1990, of all those clubs and all those members, only 57 other clubs have received this award. This was not based on our facilities, but this was based on what we do for the community. Apparently, they must read the press releases, you know, that I send to them from the paper public, whatever it is. They voted on our receiving this award at an executive council meeting, which is basically the leadership of all the districts in the United States. And it was unanimously approved by all of them, and then we received this award. I'd like to give credit where this is due. Yes, we do a lot for charities, and we do a lot for the public, but we also do a lot for the schools and the 4H. And most of this is the result of my wife, Nancy, would you stand? Until she became the Secretary and Treasurer of the club, we never, we talked about doing these programs, but we never did. And she took that project on, and this is, how many years have we been doing this now? Four or five? Yeah, I came to tell you all the schools we've been doing. Teaching principals of aeronautics and teaching kids to fly and all these things. It's wonderful. So I believe it or not, species, we received this award. It is an unbelievable honor, and I'd like to give it to the city, and because, you know, you deserve it. If it weren't for your trust in us seven years ago, say, whatever it was, whenever this was passed, this wouldn't be possible. So thank you very much for that. I wanted my wife to present it, but she said no.
Before you get away, here's the reason why this was awarded, is because of you two and the dedication that you guys put into this and your leadership. We're just happy recipients, but you guys have wanted to do all the heavy lifting and do all the work, so we really appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you all.
And Mayor, I want to make another point, but, you know, of course, yes, I remember years ago when you guys came before us and asked us to try to find the, you know, property and everything. And I really did want to thank our staff too, because I know they were working with you and trying to get the right spot and everything, so I do want to thank everyone that put so much time into putting it all together.
If you hadn't been out there, you really should go look at it. It's very professionally run. It's a beautiful RC fields. I mean, the model airplanes are not so small, but it's a beautiful location. I mean, you guys have done a wonderful job, so thank you again.
Thank you.
Been a real asset to our community. And our lifestyle has certainly added that element to it, where people can come out and more things that we get like that makes our community just more relivable, so thank you.
The city, real as we've had a lot of people coming to our events, and they used to be with us a couple of years ago. Now, Lord, we still feel that when our airshow comes on and we build the machine, we start on the apartment street, it's so wonderful to have that kind of visitation from the public and support the city and the public.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. All right, next item on our agenda is item G, which is the consent agenda items. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence in the agenda. Does anybody have any changes or anything you want to move? Just go separately.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of the consent agenda as it's presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please, Gloria?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Protan McBride?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, the next item is item H, which is our call to the public and public comments. I will open the floor, and if anyone in the audience would like, this is your opportunity. Please keep your comments to three minutes. State your name, your address, and I think that's it. Just one reminder too, is if you do make some comments, we are not able to respond since it's not agendized on the agenda from our open meeting law requirements. But we will certainly follow up and have staff follow up if necessary. Does anyone want to approach the council? Okay, we'll see none, then I'll close the floor, and we'll move on to our next item on the agenda. We don't have any contracts tonight, which I'm surprised. No boards and commissioner reports, so item K, item K1?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, we do have a presentation here. We, you can come up to the front. I have a presentation on the Creative Communities Team, and I'd like to first start by providing a little bit of historic information. Yeah, we started back in 2017 when Mayor McFarland encouraged us to apply for a grant that was being offered from the Arizona Commission on the Arts and Arizona State University Herberger's Institute for Design and Arts. So we submitted a grant, and we became a team of the CG Mosaic Creative Communities, and we submitted a grant, and we were funded. This part of the funding was for the team to explore different opportunities, creative opportunities for the community. We attended numerous sessions that were held, and in the end, we created a free creative festival, which was held, and it focused on demonstration of arts. Then the following year, the committee was invited to submit another application to continue the funding for our creative theme, our creative mosaic theme. And again, we did receive funding for this. I'm sorry, you gave me the, okay? So we did receive the funding for this, both for the first year and the second year, we received $15,000. The second year funding was for the committee to focus and continue on our mosaic theme. The committee selected to create some art on the Union Pacific Railroad, and part of our requirement for the funding was that we needed to go out to the community and ask for input from different organizations in the community of what they would think would be appropriate for our project with what's the Union Pacific Railroad and creating some art elements. So we did take the opportunity. We hired Lisa Swanson as our artist, and she helped us go out to numerous different organizations to seek their input. We also held a public forum where we invited community members to offer their input. Our team for the second phase of the Mosaic Creative Communities Teams project is myself, Erica Herman, which is the teacher and artist, Regis Summers, which is our artist and also a member of the Arts and Humanities Commission, Stacy Seaman, who's a teacher and artist, and again, Lisa Swanson is our artist and consultant that the team hired to help us put this together. With that, I'm going to, let me just handle this for you. I'm going to ask Lisa to go ahead and talk about what has been approved by the Arts and Humanities to bring forward to you to accept as our project with the art elements.
Okay, so, yeah, so, like, a few different versions of pretty much the same concept, and then the Arts and Humanities Commission, they picked the ones that they wanted to present. So this is what's on these slides here. So there's, that is our underpass there.
This is what it currently looks like.
Currently looks like?
Yeah.
We know.
And then, part of, when I first started the project, I broke it into four different sections, and so we're presenting two sections right now. So this is section one, and those are the side panels that are going down, heading east to west, and then west to east. They're on both sides. And so that's what they look like now. So this is the conceptual design that I came up with for the side panels. And the cacti's, those are metal, and then the ocateos, those are actually incised in the concrete, and they have ceramic inlay tile in them. And then there's rock on there, there could be rock, or it could be cement that looks like rock. And so, that's what, that is it. Okay, so this is what, the two facades, section two, the front, or the east and the west side, and this is what it looks like now. So this is one of the versions of the conceptual design. This one is if the Union Pacific actually donates funding for it, we would put their name in, that's actually metal where it says Union Pacific, and then their logo would be in metal there. And then over on the sides are, is stone, and then also a ceramic mosaic, the arches are ceramic mosaic. And that was the only section that I felt we could put, I know, like, the team really wanted to have all, like, different art elements, and so that particular section of the facade and the sides is really the only section that we could put any kind of mosaic ceramic on because of the train going, the vibration of the train over above. And so the facades, if you go on, if you walk on top, the facades actually come out about 12 feet from the actual railroad track. And one of the, the side that's on the east side, that railroad track is actually not used, they, like, they let the train sit there. But the other railroad track that's on the west side, that's the one that's used the most. So, but they, but the facades actually come out quite a bit, like about 12 feet, kind of in a triangular, as you can kind of see from the design.
The next one shows.
And so this is a close-up of the mosaic wall with the, with the stone. And the whole idea of the mosaic pieces of the arches is to capture the input that we got from the community, because we asked them what words and images came to their mind when they thought of Casa Grande, and the theme was the past, present, and future. And so, and we, we worked with various groups, from kids all the way to seniors. I work with people that have different handicaps and that sort of thing, so huge variety. And I know Erica, she did her students, and a big variety of people that we got the input from. And then we also had them, I took the photographs of the underpass, and I actually had them, like, make, like, color them and put their own designs on them. And so some of the artwork that we've chosen was inspired by some of the community members, their inputs. And so the whole idea with the mosaic is that it's supposed to tell the story, the history of Casa Grande. So there'll actually be pieces, like the city hall will be a tile piece, and there'll be landmark pieces, and then there'll be, like, little cotton kind of filling it in, and just different things like that. You can kind of see it on there. I kind of tried to make a collage of it. So this one here, now, this one is the same version of the one you just saw, but it has, it has the Native American design going across the whole thing, whereas the one from before, on the mosaic wall part, there was not the border, I guess you would call it. It kind of leads in from the side sections and become, kind of ties it all together. So you can see it on this one. See, the last one you saw, that's the same one, but it doesn't have the border. This one has the border. And now this one here is another version, similar version, but it has three arches, and that is if we do not get the funding from the railroad, then we would do the three arches. And like, the ideas were, like, the arches would be, one would be past, one would be present, and one would be future. And then now this one right here, this one is the Casa Grande, and it has the signs and the Casa Grande, City of Casa Grande's logo on it, and those would be in metal. And then instead of having two arches or three arches, it has one big arch. And then that is the close-up of the big arch. And the train track would actually be metal going in. Copper. And this one is the same version, but this one, everyone thought should be on the west side as you're coming into Casa Grande. And so I, all the rest of them, I showed you all the versions on the east side, so I actually put this one on the west side. It's like the same person.
That's the problem.
I wish we could have something like that coming down Canal.
I think that's everything.
Yeah, that's, and what we are asking tonight is for the City Council to, the recommendation from the Arts and Humanities Commission, to move forward, working on this project. We have been for the past six months trying to get approval from Union Pacific. Union Pacific finally sent us documentation that shows that they signed over the maintenance of this area to ADOT back in 1932. When we initially started our conversations with ADOT, they said, no, it belongs to Union Pacific. It was a couple of weeks ago that finally Union Pacific did find a document. So now we have our engineering department working with ADOT to get the approval to move forward with this. Union Pacific said if we needed their approval, they said, yes, do it.
I said, just don't ask for permission later.
So we're here again to ask that the City Council approve the Arts and Humanities Commission's recommendation to move forward with this project. We do have Regis Summers, who's a member of the CG Mosaic Team, and also a member of the Arts and Humanities Commission. I think they just wanted to say a few words about the project.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Arts and Humanities voted unanimously to move forward with this project. It's near and dear to Gloria and I's heart to see this underpass become the most beautiful thing. Dick Powell, you've always wanted an entrance into Casa Grande, and you're here. And I can't thank the community and Lisa for visually, what dances in my head was able to put it on paper and what danced on the commission's head to get it done. Also, in the median, as you go in where those ugly poles are, all that's going away.
They're going to re-landscape or are going to just blacktop it in?
No, no. It'll be with metal also, and we'll come back with that concept. It'll be metal sculptures also, but that will involve Native American, because we're also looking for funding through the Native American nations that surround us. So, but we're all looking forward to this project. I'm thrilled to be part of this, and it'll be an amazing story to tell.
Yeah, absolutely. So they're going to fix the abutments too, some of the concrete's busted up and?
That's, that's all, we have to all get together and figure that all out.
Our engineering department is trying to see if ADOT will make those repairs. And how we move, I'm sorry. I was going to say, as we move forward, it's going to depend on, obviously, our funding. Currently, we have the $15,000 that we received from the Arizona Commission on the Arts. The Casa Grande Arts and Humanities contributed $10,000, and the city has budgeted $50,000 for a CIP project. I have also applied to our native communities for funding. We're still waiting to hear if we're going to receive any. So we'll continue to seek funding opportunities, but it will be done in phases.
Donna?
Just a quick follow-up on, Union Pacific said that, you know, that they would approve, I know ADOT. Did they offer any money up with that?
I did talk to a representative, and they had opportunities. However, they don't offer them to cities. They, I think it was maybe seven years ago where they changed it, and they no longer offer funding opportunities, grant opportunities for cities. They do it for nonprofit organizations. So our hope is to partner with a nonprofit organization and submit for the next funding cycle.
Main Street or something like that?
Casa Grande Art Museum. I think if you bundle it, I think it makes it better for everybody all the way around.
I just want to also point out how much time and effort the whole group has given. Most of that was done in the evening. I attended one of, one of the, one of the many sessions that they had on it, and, you know, we had to draw these things and do it, and to see it all kind of come together, I was like, it was, mine was awkward, to say the least, but I was just, I was so excited. I like them all. I couldn't even begin to choose which.
Well, Lisa has a cute little story. She works with a senior group over at Seeds of Hope. And so it's a group of women. So she gave them the little coloring book, and they started coloring. Well, the next day, they were ready, are we going to paint it? When do we start painting? And then they were panicked.
Right, and then they, like, go through it and realize that maybe that wasn't so safe. Like, they went and talked to me for, like, weeks until I found out, you know, like, I had to tell them, you're not going to be the ones painting.
But it will become a community effort as everything starts to evolve, you know, on the painting, on everything. So it's a call to artists, it's a call to community. It's young, old, everybody will be involved in getting this done.
It's fun.
Well, thank you. As someone who drives this every single day, multiple times, it's very much needed, and people don't realize that. And I'm very excited to see this, and great job. And also, you know how much I love the arts, Casa Grande, everything else. I had a couple of, one small question is on, above the tunnels, there's a little relief in the concrete already that says Casa Grande, and it has been painted. We're going to keep that. Okay.
That never goes away.
Okay, I know it's not on here, but I figured.
Is it initially like, is it like, is a piece of cemented onto it, right?
It's metal.
I've never been brave enough to stop in the middle. I'm not sure what it, I know that we painted it, we painted it probably eight or 10 years ago, I would say, and it has some nice colors to it. Yeah, but it's really neat. It's a neat little art piece. And a lot of people don't.
It just says you want to preserve it.
Yeah.
That's all.
And a lot of people don't realize it because they don't drive there as much as I do. And I'm really glad to see it get cleaned up.
Well, and let me tell you, there has been concerns of the homeless and what happens and the tagging and so forth. So in our sessions up in Phoenix, certainly Phoenix has gone above and beyond doing their underpasses, so and so forth. But when you make it a beautiful thing, they tend not to touch it. If you go to our own downtown, is Rena here still? If you go to our downtown, we have how many murals? I never, maybe one time have they ever been, and not tagged terribly, just minor and so.
And then, and then one other quick thought is, since we're doing past, present, and future, which is awesome, Lucid Motors is going out that way, so that might be a good future transportation sponsorship opportunity.
And we spoke about that.
Okay, good. I figured you did, but.
Yep.
Thank you very much, and I'm so excited.
Thank you. Well, thank you also very much.
You know, this is really awesome, and it changes the impression of the west side completely. Because it, usually when you went under the underpass, it was kind of, it wasn't impressive at all, and it was kind of scary to walk down underneath. So the, I think it's wonderful. I think it would really enhance the reputation of our community and make people proud. The one thing I would like to see, and Matt would too, although he doesn't know it yet, is we would like to see a big sign with a cowboy on it, holding a sign saying, trucker, if your rig won't get through.
You must be this tall.
Don't go through.
Detour here so they can come around. I'm serious. We've watched, we've watched, well, it could be anything, but, you know, if it's tall enough in there, they'll see it, and the ones will come around and say, because they've torn up part of it when they try to back up and go across. and the ones will come around and say, because they've torn up part of it when they try to back up and go across, you've seen part of the cement knocked off, especially on the west side, and those trucks get under there. There's a case years ago when a truck got stuck in it, and, and they had some people come down, and they were trying to figure out how to get it out, and they had somebody helping them, they didn't think was very smart. And he watched it for a little while, and he said, well, why don't you lift a little air out of each tire? Drove it right out of there.
Anybody else have any other comments?
No, just a comment, just that it's, it really is, just exceeds my expectations. I mean, it really, I mean, I'm just so pleased to see this, and you're, yes, every time I go through there, it's just like, oh, you know, why can't we do something, so I'm really excited, so thanks for everything you guys have done on this, it's really exciting. And I'm glad to hear about those poles, Regis, 'cause I was gonna ask that, can we get rid of those things?
Well, thank you, thank you. I'll entertain a motion then to approve this.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, been moved and seconded, and all's in favor, signify if I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, congratulations. Make us proud.
So it's gonna be done before Halloween?
Yes.
No, it didn't say what year, though.
All right, and next item on the agenda is L1, public hearing, consider resolution 5199 and ordinance 3155. So you're gonna present them together, I take it, Terry?
Of course, I'm for you. Before we begin with this item, I'd like to introduce Mayor and Council to Ms. Ariana Cohen. Ari is our engineer in tech, in the engineer in tech, or the engineer in division of public work. One day, she's already came to me and said, hey, we're a bit challenged, so she ended up to be MS4 program, and has taken this program that she'd never heard of before, and has been learning all the ins and outs of it, the trials and tribulations of it. She's been running around with this project pretty much on her own, so tremendous job, especially for someone, somebody who's just an engineer in tech. So, wanted to make sure that you all were familiar with Ari. Wanted to start with just a very simple, basic presentation. You have to be by now, you've all heard of MS4. And, so just wanted to run through what the MS4 program is, and how that relates to this evening's topic. So, stormwater is one of, due rain, snowbells, they, and washers, rivers, et cetera, et cetera. Ultimately, all of it goes into a catch basin, a wash, what have you. And ultimately, stormwater has the potential to transport pollutants to other surface waters, and ultimately, groundwaterers. And those might not strike the normal person as being important in any way, but ultimately, those waters make it go way into water habitat, excuse me, and groundwater. And groundwater in particular does impact us, because that's where our drinking supply comes from. So that's why stormwater is important to the Clean Water Act, and to literally our health and well-being. So in addition to caring about those reasons, we should care about it because it's a requirement. EPA, as part of the Clean Water Act, implemented the MS4 program, basically, and then developed that authority, or delegated that authority to the state, which is the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. Of course, the state then passes that on to anybody else if they can, which is us. In 2016, ADQ was issuing a general MS4 stormwater permit. That process through ADQ took a little while, but recently have got that permit. That all was due to the 2010 census, due to our population. At that time, we had to develop the sub corridor and PEO. We likewise had to start building the MS4 program. So, what is MS4? Municipal separate storm sewer system, MS4, next to the mountain hole. And that is a system that conveys stormwater in waters of the US. Things such as streets, curbs, and gutters, excuse me, storm drains, we don't have tremendous amount of storm drains, but most of our conveyance is through channels, curbs, and gutter. Ultimately, a portion of it reaches a catch basin, or catch mason, and then flies its way into groundwater. What did it ultimately makes its way into groundwater through the North Branch and San Cruz, the wash. The problem with this, and the need for an MS4 program, is to control illicit discharges. Basically, anything that shouldn't be dumped into water that's going to be discharged into wash, into ultimately, the habitat, the wildlife habitat, and our groundwater supply. Some things that people normally think of that are involved with the MS4 are solid wastes as well. People dumping improper disposal of any waste, such as littering. That contaminant that's in the solid that's dumped there, ultimately, is washed away, washed into our groundwater system. So, illicit connections is any connection of a non-stormwater source to a storm drain system. Common examples would be shop drains, loading docks, swimming pool, that sort of thing. Dumpster drains, pool deep watering, pet waste, yes, pet waste, has solid waste, ultimately, will be carried into our watershed. Direct discharges, you know, please some boys just change the oil in the truck, and just dump it into the groundwater, or the storm drain system. Some businesses, commercial, will have things like car washes or an auto shop, that ultimately, there is the potential for that water to also reach waters of the US. So, permit compliance, we have a small MS4 general permit, and it will authorize discharges from small MS4s to waters of the United States. So that's the permit that we hold that allows our stormwater to be discharged into the water of the ground, the Arizona water of the US, excuse me. That being the North Branch and San Cruz. That permit came effective on September 30th, 2016. With that permit, we have to develop, develop and implement SWOM, as it's called, Stormwater Management Plan. We have to carry out inspections and visual assessments of portions of our conveyance network. We have sampling analysis that has to be routinely done at major points of confluence, shall we say, conducting employee training, as well as public outreach and education, and complete annual reporting. Those are almost a few of the activities Ari is doing. So, a substantial portion of the MS4 permit that we hold requires that we have it in place to create and watch rules and regulations preventing contaminated runoff in storm drain system. That's primarily what we're here for tonight, is to get that enforcement, that where it's offered and approved. We also have some best management practices. City is ready to have those reviewed and approved by ADQ. And within public works, we only have two certified stormwater inspectors, Ari and one of our new construction inspectors, or higher new construction inspector, Greg Apple. So, they're kind of the enforcement arm, but ultimately, our goal is to have almost all field staff educated in the system. You may wonder who's affected by this, the short answer is everyone, everyone within our community. Residential users, through fertilizer use, cleaning up after pets, car washing, pool drainage, any of those housekeeping kind of matters, to keep that contaminant from flowing into the MS4. In terms of commercial and industrial users, again, like a residential user, but on a little bit more stringent basis, will be ensuring, again, the runoff is free of contaminants from their business, from their processes, from how they- For some of the larger users, they actually may be required to obtain their own multi-sector general permit from ADQ. That is outside the MS4 permit, and is managed by ADQ. So, with that, any questions or comments?
I thought Ariana was gonna talk. She's gonna give the answer.
I have a couple of questions. Couple of questions.
Go ahead, Donna.
Just quickly, on, you mentioned the public outreach, I'm interested in how we're gonna do that. And then, specific to the commercial or industrial, are there already areas identified in the community that we want to make sure to target, that we've had problems in the past?
As far as public outreach goes, we've done a couple events. We've done the past silent crime, silent crime anti-
Silence, silent crime.
There you go. We've done that, we intend to do that again this year. We held a meeting at York Center recently. We post that information on our Facebook page. I do HOA meetings at this once a year. Just any outlet that I can find to try and inform the public of the MS4 program.
Couple of questions. First one is on the annual reporting, it's a written report?
It's electronic now to ADQ, it's due September 30th, and they just, we have goals that we want to meet, that's outlined in our Stormwater Management Plan, which is on our city website and available for the public to view. And so we just, both our goals, what we met, what we can improve on, and just-
Does it, does it report violations, does it report?
It does, yes.
And then the other one is, is on residential, there's a lot of people draining their pools in the street, and so that's, that's an infraction?
Yes, it is.
And that, and so, is that something that we educate and need to report, if we see something like that?
Yes, we have a flyer that we, we also have on our website, I hand that out at our outreach- And if we get phone calls, I also have city staff that I train, and so if they see some violation like that, they'll give me a call, and then I will try to contact that owner, and just inform them of the proper way.
Thanks.
And to kind of piggyback on that, I think that's important, you know, the whole outreach piece is give people alternative. I think they just don't know. And so, hopefully, we're not going to, you know, be so strict that we're gonna, you know, I don't know what the fee is, or, you know, you give people a chance to, you know, I mean, if it's their first time in violation, then, you know, it's like, okay, you know, let them go the first time, but, but I think that education piece is gonna be key, and frequently, because they, the whole dog waste, the pool, I see it all the time.
I know.
And it's not like, I mean, everyone just thinks they can do it, they have no idea. So, that, that education piece is gonna be critical, and getting it out in English and Spanish, in all neighborhoods that don't like, I don't live in a neighborhood that has an HOA, so, you know, that's not the only way to get that information out, you know, social media is really good, neighborhood flyers, bills, you know, in our bills or whatever it is, but that's gonna be key, and give, give people alternatives.
I agree.
Mr. Powell. I've called you enough, Paul, on the swimming pool things, but basically, somebody that has a swimming pool can put a pipe in to drain it in, directly into the sewer system.
They can?
Yes.
You can, that's not typically what happens.
That's the only thing you can do. And that's what I've been told, is when, when you go there, is that if you, if you're gonna drain it, that you can pump it out and pump it directly into the city sewer system, which, what you otherwise-
Actually, the most appropriate way to do that, Paul, would be, and the flyer that Ari talks about, I think addresses that, most people pump it out through their pumping system. You take that and put it into the appropriate cleanout, right in your house, that's the best way to do it.
Right.
So into your sewer line, in your sewer-
But it's not a separate drain line that you have to install.
No, no, no.
No, you just pump it into that.
Just through the cleanout.
I'm gonna echo this again, because a lot of people that live on my street and in my house have drained their pool into the street. You know, but where would you find this information? It's not, I just Googled it on our website right now, it's not on our city website. People ask me, because they know I'm city councilman, where do the pool waters? Oh, just drain it out, 'cause there's no way to get this information. So that's my first thing.
I think it's been on there, and also there over the years.
It's not on there right now, I mean, just Googled it, or searched it on our website.
We want to develop a webpage that addresses the MS4 and these sort of issues, and ultimately, that is giving more than number one.
Yeah, because a lot of it's not gonna apply to most residents, right? I mean, just the highlights of the pools and the dog waste and the vegetation. So the other thing, is there, is it associated with this, or, and who sets them? EPA sets them, we set them, like with the warning system, like you guys talked about?
Very good question. It's within the ordinance itself, there's a section that provides for, especially for repeat offenders, shall we say, I believe the fine is stipulated at $2,500. It can, if it's, and reaches another offense, be issued on the first one. There are also components in here that cover the administrative end of it, in addition to a, to a fine. A fine would be when your agent will not comply, and under certain circumstances, if the city has to intervene and take proper repair methods, methods, or correct action, those fees then also impact, impacts the user, shall we say.
If I could, Mayor and Councilmember Herman, just a clarification, though. The way the ordinance is written is violations are a class one misdemeanor, which is very common within our code and our other provisions. So to find permissible under a class one misdemeanor is $2,500. If it's charged, it would go through the court system, and so what the fine would be, would ultimately be up to, to the court. But, you know, we prosecute a lot of class one misdemeanors where the fines are not $2,500. So, just to make clear, it's not an automatic fine in there, it's prosecuted just like any other ordinance violation.
Thank you very much, my turn.
I do.
Okay, go ahead, he's already talking.
I'm still able to talk, after you're done.
Does stormwater ends up going down the wash? Do we have an end-of-the-line testing process? How do we know if we're doing a good job or not?
Typically, after a storm event, I go out and I take samples, I do pH samples. If I find that it's not within our parameters, I have to find the source of that illicit discharge, and kind of figure out how to remedy that situation, so.
Do we, do we have any kind of history of doing that, and what did it show?
We haven't had any illicit discharges yet, but we do go out every storm, I mean, maybe for about a quarter to half, we can do samples.
Okay, but so far, we're doing, okay.
So far, so good.
Okay, thank you.
Basically, the outfalls, those major points of confluence, that's where Ari does the sampling and testing. So, the points where it actually enters the North Branch and San Cruz.
Terry, is there, is there, on private land and private drainage ditches, is that part of the SM4 confluence?
When you're saying private ditches are-
Like flood basins in a community. Like, for example, County Ranch, they own the flood basins, it's not part of, it's their, it's their own property. It's owned by the homeowners.
And in those cases, the retention basins particularly are a point of concern, that water that goes into a retention basin and stays there still has the potential to get into our groundwater. So the HOAs are required to maintain those basins, dry wells, any other facilities related to it, but we're still responsible for enforcing even upstream of that basin, or should we see that the basin is not operating as it's supposed to, or is taking on contaminants that it's not supposed to? That would be something-
Again, the reason I ask is because I know my HOA tells its residents to put it in the street, 'cause then the water goes into those retention basins. That's the direction we've given to the homeowners. So if that's the case, then obviously that's wrong, and we need to change that. I'm just speaking from my personal experience.
And then, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, you're speaking of pool water?
Correct.
Okay. There are a couple reasons that we really don't want it to go into any kind of storm drain system unless there is no overall alternative. We want to make sure that the whole water dischaging discharge is free of contaminants. The biggest is typically the pH. Either equal acid washing, and just want to pump that out. In either case, we want to make sure that the water is not contaminated, whether it's discharged into the lowways that go into your HOA's basin, or be it proven conveyed through the sewer system. The advantage of it through the sewer system is there will be some level of treatment in case there's a little bit of contaminant left over. But in many ways, that water, we give credit for it, because it is considered more efficient rechargeable. If you just dump it into the street, it gets in the basin, or into the aquifer, we don't give any credit for it. So it may sound like a small amount, but every drop counts, right?
Mr. Powell.
The retentions required, whether you're a private homeowner, business, or whatever, it seems like most of the water that's runoff water goes through the streets when you have a rain event, and drains into, I know, the south side all drains into retention area just west of our store. And it very seldom fills up. It did one time, and they pumped it into another drainage thing to get it over there. But the waters that go into the, like Walmart are the big ones that would have all kind of automotive traffic, and would have oil or spills or whatever. They have dry wells usually, don't they, underneath to assume their water?
Many of them do, when they, especially when they don't have enough surface area to equip, just an adequate basin. The point that you may make, Paul, regarding large users like-
Yeah.
Ultimately, that type of operation would need to get its own separate permit through EDQ. At that point, it identifies and addresses potential hazards on site to make sure it doesn't even get to their conveyance or to their basins. Hope that answers your question.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so I don't want for any public comment on item L1. Anyone from the audience have any comments they'd like to make? Okay, seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing, and we'll consider resolution number 5199, please, Gloria.
Resolution number 5199, a resolution of the mayor, council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, declaring as a public record a certain document pertaining to the city's stormwater pollution prevention codes.
Mayor Farland, I move approval of resolution number 5199 as presented, and it also helps keep us out of jail if it's-
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Pitts-Gibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Lieutenant Gray.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, Gloria, then I'll also entertain an ordinance number 3155, please.
Ordinance number 3155, an ordinance of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending the city of Casa Grande municipal code by an entitled 18 Stormwater Pollution Prevention, establishing penalties for violations thereof, establishing the separability of the various sections of the ordinance, and establishing an effective date.
Mayor McFarland, I move for the passage of ordinance number 3155 as presented.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Pitts-Gibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cortson.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Lieutenant Gray.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
Okay, the next item is item L2, also a public hearing. Mr. Teis, is this you?
It is, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This agenda item pertains to a zone change request for a 42.486 acre site to rezone it from its current zoning of R1A to new zoning of PAD to allow the creation of a manufactured home site. That, this screen shows you the location of the property. It's surrounded by three streets, Casa Grande Avenue and Viola and O'Neill Drive. This graphic shows you the proposed layout of the manufactured home site if the rezoning were to be approved. So the PAD's zone change request is to allow for the development of an active adult mobile home park, manufactured home park, consisting of 203 manufactured home sites. The applicant tells us that those manufactured homes would sell between 125,000 and 250,000. It would also include a community center with a pool, 18% open space, gated entrance, private streets, a decorative perimeter block wall, and an eight-foot multi-use trail, an open space corridor connecting two existing city parks. And we'll show you some more details on that design as we move through the presentation. And then, with any rezoning, especially with a PAD rezoning, we, staff looks at two major considerations. One is, does the application conform with the city's general plan? And two, does the application conform with our adopted PAD design guidelines? So in reviewing conformance with the city's general plan, this property is located within our neighborhood's land use category, and that particular land use category has a provision that says development up to 4.5 dwelling units per acre may be permitted for developments on sites between 40 and 160 acres, that provide for a range of lot sizes and integrate housing attainable to low, moderate, and other income households, individuals, or families. So staff found that this proposal for this manufactured home park would provide housing opportunities to residents who are often on a fixed or limited income, and thus would be eligible for the 4.5 dwelling units per acre density. Without this, what we'll call sort of a density bonus, the normal standard is 4DUs per acre. So we give a little bit higher density for developments over 40 acres that meet the criteria, providing some alternative housing choices. However, with the applicant's proposal of 203 lots proposed for this 42.86 acre site, that would actually mathematically result in an overall density of 4.8 DUs per acre. In consideration of this situation, staff felt that due to the fact that the existing R1A zoning of the site would allow the development of single-family homes and duplexes with a higher density of 6.5 dwelling units per acre, that this downzoning to 4.8 DUs per acre was in substantial compliance with the 4.5 density limit of the general plan. Because the existing zoning of the site of R1A actually allows the creation of 5,000 square foot lots for single-family homes. It's our highest density single-family development, and you can see that the existing R1A zoning would result, or could result, in a development that has a density higher than our general plan allows. But the existing zoning is kind of grandfathered. So the staff looked at this initially, we felt that the downzoning, or the lowering of the density to 4.8, we could find a compliance, a significant compliance with the general plan. However, after the planning commission meeting and discussing this matter in more detail with the city attorney, the staff was advised that really, the 4.5 density cap was a literal cap, that 4.8 would not, could not be found to be in compliance with the general plan. So, and city attorney may want to opine more on that, but I'll kind of describe it for you. But, so now, accordingly, staff is now recommending a reduction of the number of lots from 203 to 195 to bring it into compliance with the general plan. Now, it brings it into mathematical compliance, because with 195 lots, the density calculates at 4.549. Mathematically, we'd always round that down to 4.5. So it does mathematically technically comply with the 4.5. But it would be a reduction in the number of lots from 203 to 195. The planning commission was not aware of this general plan compliance issue, if you will, so they actually recommended approval of the 203, because this issue came up after the planning commission meeting. But in addition to that 4.5 density requirement in our neighborhoods in the general plan, we have many additional goals and policies and strategies in the plan that talk about housing development and what kinds of housing development we really should be creating in the community. And so staff, as we looked at that, we found a number of policies in the general plan that we thought this proposal would do a good job of implementing. The first is to support infill development in areas where infrastructure capacity and services are already in place and available. This is a classic infill project, as you can see. All the streets are around it, there's no new street construction required, all the sewer and water infrastructure is essentially in place on the perimeter of the site. So it's a classic infill, clearly something that we're trying to promote with the general Again, this is sort of, with our general plan, we look, we try to, in addition to infill, focus all new development in our Phase 1 area, because that's where the city is already providing services, garbage collection, fire services, police services, road maintenance, et cetera. So a project like this really is very efficient for the city to provide services for. We're not increasing our service costs, we're actually just taking advantage of existing services that we're providing. There's a goal to provide a variety of housing choices for all income levels, generations, and household demographics. Again, this is, though, an age-restricted development, so it might, it doesn't really cover all demographics in terms of age cohorts, but it clearly does provide housing for a variety of income levels, including folks who might be on fixed incomes. Again, support a wide variety of housing choices in Casa Grande is another goal in various policies of the general plan related to that goal. So in this case, the project will be gated and surrounded by a decorative block wall. The north and east sides of the project will include a 25-foot wide trail corridor, supplemented with the required 15-foot landscape track, providing a 40-foot wide buffer along Casa Grande Avenue and Viola Street, and the buffer will include an eight-foot wide multi-use path that will connect College Park and O'Neill Park. And so this graphic will show you that connection on the perimeter of the property, along those two street frontages, there will be a 40-foot wide open space corridor with an eight-foot multi-use trail connecting two of our city parks. Now, that trail corridor will be used by both residents of this new manufactured home park, plus existing residences in the surrounding neighborhoods, to be able to travel safely between our two city parks.
So that is outside the exterior wall?
It is, outside the wall.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
It's along Viola and Casa Grande Avenue.
Now, so in addition to compliance with the general plan, we review projects for compliance with the PAD design standards. So the PAD design standards establish zoning requirements, if you will, for residential PADs. And so this particular development does not comply with all of those requirements, and we're gonna point out to you which ones it doesn't meet, and also point out that the actual ordinance that adopted the design standards allowed for some flexibility in applying these standards, under this exception where it says a proposed infill development, proposed infill housing development on parcel land between 5 and 50 acres is typically surrounded by established residential neighborhood, may qualify for some departure from the design guidelines. And that departure, whatever departure is authorized, is at the discretion of council at this point in the review process. So we're going to show you what parts of the design standards the applicant is not meeting, and why staff is actually supporting the exception in the basis for our support. So the first is that the minimum lot size is 6,000 square feet. They're proposing to have 5,000. Now, again, keep in mind that the existing R1A zoning allows 5,000 square feet. So from our perspective, from staff's perspective, it's appropriate to grant that exception, because their existing zoning actually already has that exception. So we think that's a justified exception in this case. Now, also, just as an aside, I'm gonna tell you that most manufactured home parks, lot sizes are on 3,500 square feet. That's sort of the industry standard. So their lot sizes here are gonna be significantly larger than standard manufactured home parks. The PAD design standards also say that, look, although you can have a 6,000 square foot minimum lot size, for any lot that's less than 7,000, you have to have an equal number of over eight. So essentially, in the PAD design standards, you end up with an average lot size of 7,000 square feet, even though you can go down to six. In this case, they're all kind of right around 5,000. So they don't have any that are 8,000. It's really, again, probably not appropriate to have 8,000 square foot lots in a manufactured home park. I think these lots are appropriately sized for that product type at 5,000 square feet. But again, they are going to need an exception to, if that is to be the case. Again, they're gonna ask for a little, some relief on the setbacks from the PAD design standards. The PAD design standards require five and 10-foot setbacks, minimum, at least 10-foot on one side, the other one can have five. In this case, they're requiring, they're proposing to have five-foot setbacks on each side, and there's also some relief requested on the front and side, so they are asking for 10-foot on the side, 10-foot on the rear. Now frankly, I don't think they're gonna be down to the minimum on all of these, because these manufactured homes are typically maybe 24 feet wide, but they might have some carports on them. But because those are 5,000 square foot lots, they're not gonna be maxing these up. They're gonna be, but they would like the relief and the ability to have these minimum setbacks where they need them, but they're not gonna be using them in every case. The other thing that you should keep in perspective here is that the PAD design guidelines- The other thing that you should keep in perspective here is that the PAD design guidelines, really, in my mind, and I wasn't here when they were created, but from looking at them and understanding the history, it appears that they really are designed for standard, single family subdivisions, for stick build subdivisions. But, some language was put into them that said that manufactured home parks have to comply with the same standards, right? I don't know if that was an afterthought, or why that was really done, it was pretty unusual, but that's in fact what we have. But there also is the ability to grant some relief and exception where warranted for infill projects. So maybe that was the thinking, that we would look at manufactured home parks or other infill projects on a case-by-case basis. The other requirement for, for residential design standards is that you have to provide a lot of different architecture, which we call housing product, variety of housing product architecture, including five models with three elevations and five color schemes. Very appropriate in our single family neighborhoods for stick build. In this case, probably not so much with manufactured homes, although they do vary, the design and architecture, it doesn't, not to the degree of a standard, single family neighborhood. So the applicants are proposing to have three models with six color schemes. Again, this is a neighborhood that's completely self-contained, gated community, and, but I think it's still going to be pretty pleasant. If you've visited Rancho Val Vista, this, which is one of our newest manufactured home developments off Treacle, this would be very similar to that. The lot sizes will actually be larger, but it'll be similar in terms of the types of housing product, I believe that will be provided.
Paul?
Yes, sir.
When you're on this picture, can I ask a couple of questions on that?
Yes.
So, I know the ground set, are these any ground set?
You know, that, that would be a good quote for the applicant. Let me tell you a little bit about the building permit process for manufactured homes. We don't control it, controlled by the Arizona Department of Housing, of manufactured housing. So they actually issue the building permits for each of these. What we have local control on right now is simply that each one of these, before they set, meets the setbacks and the requirements of its zoning, but not how the structure's built, or how the foundation is designed. So we don't get to review that, but as a condition of the zoning, if you require, for example, ground set, or some particular type of skirting or enclosure of the foundation, you could oppose that as part of the zoning, and we could make sure that was accomplished.
Because there's two things on there, there's the ground set, and there's also the porch, which are unusual for most manufactured homes. I know we're not here to approve their architectural design, but can we, is there, I mean...
Well, look, under the housing product provision, you could, as part of your approval, require, in addition to the three models with six color schemes, that each one has a porch, or some number have a porch, and that they all be ground set. That would be an appropriate, I believe, condition that you could impose, if that...
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to jack their price up to where they won't be able to sell a home either. I was just curious.
I think it was in the PNC minute, something I read today.
Are they legally affixed to the property?
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
No, she's talking about do they own the property.
So in other words, now go run with the land.
Do they own the property?
No, in this case, they are going to be set on leased spaces. The occupants will own the home, the structure, and they'll be on leased spaces. Okay? Now, the applicant is here, and I'm sure they can address any of these more typical questions you might have, if I'm not doing an adequate job.
Go ahead, and you finish, I just, while we were on that picture, I just...
So, I know that one of the concerns we always have when we do infill projects is, well, what does the existing neighborhood think? We have a lot of existing residents, what do they think? So in this case, because planning staff is aware of that concern, we held a, a neighborhood meeting at the pre-application stage, before we even had an application submitted. And we had, held it here, and we invited Joe, how far out did we invite?
Five hundred feet.
From the site. Every property owner within five hundred feet of the site, to come to the neighborhood meeting, the applicant was here, and we had pretty good attendance. I'm thinking maybe we had twenty, twenty-five people. And there were some concerns in the neighborhood, about, you know, you know, whether or not, you know, whether, what effect this development might have on their property values and their quality of life. In the end though, when they learned about the, the cost, the value, and the type of units that were going to be placed there, that it was going to be a secured facility, well landscaped on the perimeter, and age restricted, everyone was, was in support. We really didn't have any opposition at that point. Did anyone show up at the planning commission public hearing in opposition?
Nobody, nobody spoke at the planning commission hearing in opposition. We did receive two, two letters in opposition, one, one in regards to the spaces shouldn't be leased, they should be able to purchase the spaces, and the other one I included in your packet, I don't recall exactly the, the main issue, I think it was not wanting it to be active adult, is I think one of their issues.
But in general, I think the neighborhood was supportive of the active adult. I, I would say that, my sense is that there was consensus in the neighborhood, that this was going to be a positive impact on their neighborhood, and was a, was a good proposal for them. And there may be neighbors here this evening that might speak to you, I don't know for sure. So, you can see the public hearing efforts that we made, and I just described those to you. So, in this case, you have, you have a few alternatives for decision-making. One is to approve the zone change with a limit of a hundred and ninety-five lots, and have the applicant revise their major site plan and PAD guide to reflect that change. That is what staff is recommending. I believe that what the attorneys tell us would be in technical compliance with the general plan, but we think that's the appropriate decision to make. You could approve it with a hundred and ninety-two lots, which is just four point five dwelling units per acre, with no, no rounding, basically. Again, the applicant would have to revise their major site plan and PAD guide to reflect the change. You could approve the zone change with the two hundred and three lots, as requested by the applicant, although we, we could not find that really would be in compliance with the general plan. Or you could deny the zone change. And then another thing I did not put on here, which is certainly in your purview, is to, you know, modify, you know, approve it with some different conditions regarding the housing product, or any other conditions you might find appropriate. So, that summarizes our presentation, Mr. Mayor.
So is the builder here, can we ask?
This is a public hearing. So the applicant's here, and there may be...
Okay. Do you want to hold your questions until after we do the public hearing?
Sure.
Okay. All right, so then I'll open the public hearing, then, and so if there's anybody who would like to speak on this matter, this is your opportunity. Again, try and keep your comments to three minutes, state your name, your address, and if there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Rob Wonganker, I'm with the WLV group. My address for the record is forty-four forty-four East Broadway Boulevard, Tucson, Arizona, eight five seven one one. I'm here representing the owners. Mr. Peter Holden is one of the owners of this property. We're pleased to answer any questions you have tonight. I'd like to respond to a couple of the questions that were raised just a moment ago. All the homes will be ground set, just wanted to let you know that. As far as the porches and the actual style of the homes, some of them do have porches, can't guarantee that there will be a home or a porch on every one of the home, it would really boil down to purchaser preference.
Those are like add-ons or something?
Could be, and it could be added on, if someone wants a porch initially, they could buy a unit that has a porch. So, we're not exactly certain how that would work.
I didn't, I didn't want to make it a deal breaker.
Oh, sure. But nonetheless, we're excited to bring this project to you. We appreciate all the work that staff has done. I apologize for the confusion about the density. We, we would request, we would certainly request that you not choose the option, which is denial. We would be pleased if you would approve tonight with the hundred and ninety-five units. My clients are very excited by getting this project going. We think it's a great addition to the community, and we're pleased to present it to you tonight. Thank you very much for that.
Questions?
Paul?
You, you leased the land?
Correct. The purchasers will lease the land and own the unit, the house.
And then, who owns the home on it?
Lady.
The, the individual buys the house.
Okay, when he leaves, takes the home with him, or what does he do?
Yeah, I think there's some options there, that, that, I mean certainly, the houses could be relocated, and they could be taken somewhere else. The house could be sold, just like any other house would be sold. So, not certain exactly how it would happen, but there are a couple options.
That's pretty standard though, isn't it?
Yeah.
I believe it's stipulation.
I've never heard of it.
Yeah, they do it all the time. Matt, do you have a comment, question?
Not for him, really. Did I hear you say you, you were in support of the option to limit it to a hundred and ninety-five lots?
Hundred and ninety-two would be four point five.
I thought I heard you say one ninety-five.
One ninety-five, correct, yes.
One ninety-five.
Right.
Okay, and I, and this is probably just a comment, but I, I see that, that we're looking at five thousand square feet per lot? And I see a bit of a, of a irony here, that we're asking the applicant to reduce the number of lots, but yet we're, we're asking for a lot size that is bigger than the normal lot of these type of neighborhoods, which I, I heard was quoted at thirty-five hundred. I would think that that clientele, age restricted, that they, they would want a smaller lot, not necessarily a larger one that they have to maintain. Is there, is there a, an industry standard that we're looking at or working around here? And I, and I guess, my, my bottom line is, I don't want to force the applicant into reducing the number of lots, because if we're, if we're basing this on what we've seen at Rancho Val Vista, man, that's beautiful. And, and I can see that this, this development in that neighborhood is, is a wonderful thing. That's problematic piece of property. And to, to see that up and running at that location, I think is a wonderful thing, and I think we need to be behind you a hundred percent. So I, I don't want to feel like we're, we're squeezing you into accepting a smaller amount of lots.
Understood and appreciated, and yes, lots for this type of product are smaller. If you've visited Palm Creek is a great example, for instance. Those lots, as, as Paula mentioned, they can be three thousand, thirty-five hundred square feet. So yes, they are smaller, this type of demographic, and the people that will live here, I don't know about you, at a certain point, you get tired of doing yard work, right? So you want a smaller yard, less to maintain, you can do other things with your time besides doing yard work. So another reason for a smaller lot. We, we originally designed it with five thousand square foot lots, based on some issues that we worked with, with staff, as far as density, and trying to maintain general compliance with the surrounding neighborhood. I mean, it should be your pleasure tonight to maintain the two hundred and three lots with some smaller lot sizes along with it. I don't think we'd be opposed to that. I guess it's a new thought, new idea, that hadn't really contemplated until standing up here tonight and speaking with you, but sure, we're, we're open to suggestions, so...
Okay. I appreciate the fact that you came here tonight, and that you said you're good with the one ninety-five, because that, to me, makes it a lot easier, because we get with our four point five, and you guys are agreeable to it, so it's not...
Four point five.
It's four point five, four nine.
Yeah.
So that rounds to four point five.
One ninety-two is where you get the four point five, which are supposed to be.
But the four point five.
Right, we are. I, I believe that's also staff's recommendation.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And the five thousand square foot lot, because I was expecting a lot of pushback from the surrounding community, I read the correspondence, and I know we're going to talk to, hear from some people hopefully tonight. So, you know, and there was nothing about lot size or number, they were just happy with, you know, generally doing some of that piece of property. But with this PAD, is it always going to be a fifty-five plus? I mean, is that part of the PAD, so, or could it ever be changed in the future? Is that like CCNR thing, or is that a PAD thing?
Oh, it could have been changed, so that it was not age restricted.
Correct.
You know, the, the business model of my client is, you know, the fifty-five plus. I'm not aware that he has any plans to change that, I don't...
But that's not in our PAD, that's in his...
Yeah, I, I don't know if it's memorialized actually in the PAD.
The four point five, no, we're not. Councilman Herman, there's nothing in the city zoning code or, or our PAD requirements that would make restrict this, however, the applicant is proposing in his PAD to restrict it. So, it's in his actual language, his PAD, that it's restricted. It could be modified, though, the applicant could come back for it and say, I want to revise my PAD, and we'd bring it back before you. But right now, at the applicant's request, it's actually restricted.
Okay, and that's, I was just going to say, that's disappointing to me in a way, but you know, it's your land and your business, so good for you. I mean, I just wish we had more affordable homes for different generations, but again, your business, and you know, your guys' plans, so good luck.
Appreciate it.
Don, any other questions?
Just a clarification, because I think some of the concern that I heard was park model versus mobile, mobile homes.
Manufactured.
Yeah, manufactured homes. So, you know, that was, that was one that I heard, so clarification on that. And then, Paul, you had mentioned, I thought you said something about it was sent to residents within five hundred feet, is that what you said? Because I thought it said in here three hundred.
It did say three hundred.
Yeah, for the pre-application, it was sent to five hundred feet, and there was also a sign posted on the side.
Okay, because I thought I saw somewhere three hundred, and I know that's...
The, so, yeah, originally, when we had the neighborhood meeting, I wanted to extend that boundary past that three hundred feet.
So we did do that, okay.
To ensure that we were getting additional people within the neighborhood. And then for the, for the public hearing notice, we wanted to require standards.
So we made two notices, one at pre-app, and then one at, when the application was submitted.
Okay, good, thank you.
One at five hundred, one at three hundred. And also, to answer your question on the park models, park models would not be allowed in this, in this zoning.
Also, ground set, which is not a park model.
Some of them are.
I haven't seen a park model ground set.
So just a couple of questions from here, it's on a hundred and ninety-five lots, as opposed to the two hundred and three. There's discussion about not wanting to do yard, but I, looking at a lot of these, particularly over on Treacle, they actually do more gravel than anything that's requires maintenance and that. I think it would add to the quality of it. If the developer is, if you all are amenable to the one ninety-five, I believe Paul has a good reason to have it at the one ninety-five. And it, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't do it unless you could make the money on it, on the one ninety-five. So, and I think it just gives it a more of a quality product and that, so just wanted to put my two cents on that one.
And I'm going to agree, because I, what, what would we have to do, because you're saying that going to the one ninety-five would, I mean, what, would we have to change something in the guidelines to go, to, to move outside of that?
So, the, the, the one ninety-five, the reduction from two oh three to one ninety-five is to bring the plans with the general plan. The neighborhoods category, which allows a four point five deuse per acre for this kind of development. And the one ninety-five achieves four point five through the mathematical rounding. So, so, but their current plan is two hundred and three, so they would just have to remove some lots, right? Eight lots would have to be removed. All of them would still be five thousand square foot lots, all of them, meaning one hundred and ninety-five would be five thousand. What they're proposing to do is just take eight lots out and make more open space in that area.
Okay, okay, got it. Which is great to have more open space, for sure, in there, but I love the idea of this. I think it's important for us to continue offering diverse, you know, housing opportunities for the citizens, and, and you know, having the, you know, the age restriction, you're right, we definitely need it for everyone, but, but this is good, you know, our elderly population is growing, and, you know, there are people that are on fixed income, and so I think this is a great alternative and, and a great infill project. So, no, I was, I was really happy to see it, so.
The, why isn't this an R four instead of a PAD? It's bastardized the PAD process. We're not doing what a PAD requires, Paul. Why are we letting that happen? Why don't we do an R four, and you're okay with it? There's no reason to make this a PAD if we're not going to follow it. Gotcha, gotcha. Councilman Paul, the, the answer to your question is, we thought that the PAD gave us a better product. They could have went for an R four, which would allow them to have lot sizes of forty-five hundred square feet versus five thousand. Which is fine, if you want to do that with an R four, do an R... Which is fine if you want to do that with an R four, do an R four, it's not a PAD. And we wouldn't get the quality of open space, the trail linkages. We staff thought that the PAD gave us a superior product. If you have forty-five foot, uh, for those lots and, and you have those there instead of the thousand, you've got more open space. So you've got room for more homes. An R four is what this ought to be. This is not a PAD because you're not following the rules for PAD. And that's what we give up as a council over and over again. We make these zoning rules and then we don't stick to them. You have to realize though, Councilman Paul, that with the R four, you would not get this quality or quantity of open space, trail linkages and design. You would get more of a cookie cutter development. If you had the same number of homes in there, why would it be any difference? You'd have more open space with the smaller, smaller lots. Because the, we wouldn't have, we couldn't require the trail linkage and the, and the, and there's less open space required in the R four than the PAD. Paul, does this comply exactly with the PAD? No, it doesn't, and that's the bottom line. It doesn't, and we make, when we, when we soft pedal our zoning and say, okay, we'll let you do this or that. I'm all for what you're proposing. I think it's a great idea. It's not a PAD. I think it ought to be an, an R four. I'd be happy with it. I think it's needed. I think it'd be good. Actually, we'd give you a chance to build some more homes in there with an R four rather than a PAD.
Any other questions? Is there anybody in the public that's here to speak?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys got to stick up.
All right.
Get some backbone.
Yes, sir. So with the one ninety-five, then that puts us in compliance with our general plan.
It does. You're all still off.
Okay. All right, then, um.
For the one ninety-two, you're in compliance.
Do you still have the public hearing open, Mayor?
I haven't closed it yet.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
All right, seeing no one else approaching the lectern, then I will close the public hearing. And I will, uh, ask for an ordinance number, but how do you want to?
Can I ask, can I ask more questions?
Yeah.
Okay, this was more for, for planning. And, and I think this is a good way to go because we get bigger lots with less houses in the same area. So we get less density and we're controlling it better, making a better product, in my opinion. But the other thing is the traffic. And I read the traffic studies and I know that, that Florence and O'Neill was a problem that comes up, but we're not really putting it on this. But my real concern, because I drove by this today, and I'll say I grew up about two blocks from here when I went to grade school, and this was a vacant lot forty years ago. And forty years ago, I was saying, man, I'd really like to get something there. And it's been going and now we have someone who wants to put something really nice there. The neighbors seem to like it. We haven't had any, well, a couple of suggestions, but no real pushback or outcry. But the traffic and my main concern is that O'Neill and Cas Grande Avenue, and I drove there tonight, or rode there, because I can't drive right now, but, uh, there's a four-way stop there now. And it, it was, it used to be a two-way years ago, been a four-way for a couple of years, I think. Would that necessitate at some point, because we got the school down the street, we've got the park there. When would that necessitate a, a signal or what, you know? What are we looking there? Because that is really my big concern, is that traffic at O'Neill and Cas Grande Avenue with all the kids there and the houses.
Schools.
What? Is it four-way now?
Yeah, it just became.
It's four, it, I mean, just newly a four-way. I drove through on my way here.
So.
And that's an improvement over what it used to be.
As you, as you know, with this project, we did require traffic impact analysis. Um, and it was reviewed by our traffic engineer. And so based on his professional review, he felt that the four-way stop was adequate to handle the traffic today, right? Based with the traffic that this project was going to add. So I really can't answer your question that whether or not in the future we might need a signal there, right? I can tell you that the analysis said essentially, we're going to need a signal at O'Neill and, uh, and Peneau with or without this project, right?
Yeah.
And so you probably almost need one today, right?
And that, yeah, I know that one, but that's a lot more complicated.
It is, right. Yep, and it's an A dot.
Yeah, that's what, that's why I said it's a lot more complicated.
But I really can't tell you anything other than, you know, the, the Casa Grande, O'Neill intersection, other than, uh, our traffic engineer looked at it and said it was adequate with the four-way stop.
Okay, and are they relying on the fact that this is age restricted? I mean, is that a legit, I guess it isn't even going to have standards. You know, and I read that this is age restricted, so it's not going to generate as many trips. But is that legitimate, you know?
It, it, well, I can tell you what, what the ITE manual says for a standard single-family home. It's nine point five trips per day, right? Now, trip is, you come, it, and you, it's a trip and you leave, it's a trip, right? So I'm sure though with the active adult, because you're, you know, you don't have children who drive in, in, A, who drive in the, living in the home, or B, who need to be driven somewhere in the home, which generate a lot of trips, that the actual average trips for age restricted is significantly less than a non-age restricted. I can't tell you the exact number, but I'm sure it is significantly less.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Powell.
If you look at what's right, these five thousand foot lots, if you replaced every one of those with forty-five hundred, do you still have the open space? You still have everything else there. You have them less close to each other because they're on smaller lots. Just put a forty-five, or, uh, the, uh, four, forty-five hundred instead of five thousand in each lot that's there.
Gets smaller.
And an R fourteen, no, it won't. It won't be smaller at all. It'd be the same.
Each lot would be smaller, but.
It'd be a little bit smaller so that it wouldn't look as, as dense out there if each of the lots that's here shown is a forty-five hundred. You've still got the open space. That's not disappearing. Would, would, would you as a developer go to an R fourteen at forty-five?
I wouldn't vote for it anyway. I know.
Personally, if it helps, I like the, I like the plan. I like the way the format is. And I think everybody else is in agreement.
I gotta answer a question there. We haven't voted, so we don't know who wants what.
I know. I don't want a development on.
Let's let him answer the question right now.
I just conferred with my client for a moment. Uh, and he would actually prefer the five thousand square foot lot, um, for this project, based on other projects he's done as well, so, but we appreciate your comments very much, but he would prefer the five thousand.
Thank you. All right, then, do I need a motion to accept the first?
Need to amend.
Or how do you want to do this?
So you, you've closed the public hearing. Um, there's only one ordinance that, that's been proposed on, on this, at least as far as I, I know.
Does the ordinance have the recommendation?
So the ordinance has written, or a copy of which you would have, um, does require that the PAD guide be amended to reflect, uh, one hundred and ninety-five lots, which would reduce, reduce the density to four point five, four nine. Um, and just to, to speak to that issue so that council can kind of understand, you know, how we kind of got there, is that council is permitted ultimately to determine what its general plan means. Now, obviously that doesn't go without restriction, which is where the four point eight density, um, we didn't feel would be supportable under a general plan that says four point five. Ultimately, you determine what four point five needs. If you are comfortable and adopt one hundred and ninety-five, you would be accepting, which would be in technical compliance due to rounding, a four point five, four nine. If you didn't want to go there, you didn't feel like that's what your general plan meant, that's the reason that, that Mr. Tyson and staff put a, a lot restriction of one ninety-two, which would get you right at four point five. Either one of them, I believe, are, uh, acceptable for council because it is your general plan. Uh, but we wanted to make sure that you understood how you'd be reaching that if you elected to do one hundred and ninety-five lots.
Right.
The reason again, we can't do the two oh three is it puts you at a density of four point eight and I don't believe that that would really be a supportable, uh, figure, even if council wanted to adopt that. Uh, certainly in the general plan twenty thirty, if we wish to look at higher densities in this area, we have the opportunity to do that as well.
But the only one that complies is the one ninety-two.
Again, I think it's, uh, council's purview to determine what complies.
Let's look back at what it says.
Well, again.
It says four point five in our general plan.
That is correct.
Your attorney, we don't go by what we say?
Ms. Powell, I do believe you go by.
It says four point five, that is one ninety-two.
Yes, sir.
And that's, going beyond that is not. So we're not doing, we're not abiding with anything on this. We're just throwing out cookies.
But you're saying by rounding, um, the way you rounded, right?
Ultimately, what the case law says is that determination. And that what you have to be is in substantial compliance with the general plan. Frankly, that's how staff had kind of gotten to a recommendation of four point eight, is that given the reduction in density over what their current zoning was, they felt it was supportable because it met the other elements of the general plan. I do believe that, that council can make the determination what the general plan means and what four point five means. If you want to call it four point five zero, you have that option. If you want to call it four point five, four nine, you have that option. I don't believe that anything above four point five, four nine would be supportable, uh, under the language of the, of the general plan. But ultimately, that's a council determination as to what that means.
Why isn't, what, why isn't the general plan, instead of the council? We're, we're changing stuff on this, uh, as we go. I mean, this is crazy. The, I remember doing the four point five, Paul, and what we said is if you'll bring in more kind of homes and mix them, we'll let you have that extra, extra half. We'll go to four point five is the density instead of four. I, I know where that came from and that's on the general plan. And now we're saying, well, we can't cut two or three homes off and get exactly what it's supposed to be.
And if I could, uh, Mr. Powell, to be, to be clear, indicating that the council take a four point five, four nine density number. Okay, I, I would simply ask front, by staff, what would be the maximum supportable? But part of the reason that we have the one ninety-two is understanding that council may also elect to say, you know, we didn't say four point five rounded, we want four point five zero, right? So either one of those, I think, are available. So my opinion is simply what council is allowed to do under the general plan and the case law. I'm not suggesting, Mr. Powell, that council do that. I don't make suggestions in terms of what you ought to do. I simply am trying to provide the options, uh, for council as they were.
When we adopted that in the general plan and voted on it and the community accepted it, it was four point five. That's exactly what it was. And it didn't say you can go over by this or that. It was four point five.
That is the, that is the language of the general plan.
That's right.
It does say four point five.
So was the, was this discussed with the applicant, you know, these, you know, um, different options here at all? I know you said that you would prefer the one ninety-five going from the initial two oh three, but, you know, did, did you discuss the one ninety-two and was it a, a huge issue?
So we did discuss these options with the applicant. They indicated, they really wanted the two oh three. They were worried that anything less than two oh three would financially kill the project. Um, we told them we could not legally support, based on the, uh, advice of our attorney, the two oh three, but that legally, uh, one ninety-five would meet the requirement of the general plan. Uh, and so we did talk about all these options with the applicant. And, uh, I guess I'm going to say that they would have said, kind of grudgingly, they could support, they could live with the one ninety-five. I, I think that's by the best way to describe it. They were willing to, to go to that.
Okay.
But they weren't concerned about the financial implications. So it doesn't matter what we require, it's just what they want to go to, Paul? No, sir. Um, I'm going to tell you that I think four point five, four nine meets the general. No, it doesn't. It says four point five exactly. It says four point five, Paul, you hit. Because four point. You were there when we did it. Four point six would not meet it. No, we're not talking about four point six. We're talking about four point five. That's exactly what it was. And if that cost them two or three homes, we, we violated the, the, uh, we haven't complied with, with the, uh, the rules that we have in place. When you apply any numbers, Mr. Powell. You've gone through this whole thing and you've just changed it as we've gone. Mathematical application. When you apply numbers, the standard mathematical application is to always round. We are only rounding here. We didn't say round. We said it's not to exceed four point five. Not to exceed.
I think we're cutting, cutting hairs here.
We may be cutting hairs, so they can give up about three homes and make it legal. If you don't want to follow up, Mayor, if you're not, somebody wants to follow the rules, do what you want.
Mr. Powell, I want to follow the rules, but I'm going to call.
Well, you're not following.
I don't think it's a matter of not following the rules. I think, you know, as Brett indicated, that we would still be in compliance. And I get what you're saying, Dick, with the four point five. But, you know, exactly, I mean, it, it, you know, there is a rounding thing with anything, you know, in, in math, really. So I don't have a problem. I think, you know, this is a, a great project that they're bringing. Um, you know, we're trying to, we want to work with them. You know, it's still in compliance with the general plan. It really is. It really is. Um, and so why are we nickeling, diming, you know, I mean, the, them? I mean, let's, you know, I mean, it, it's a good project that's needed and I think it falls within. I mean, if you're saying Brett, it falls within the, you know, general plan guidelines. He's telling us it falls within with that guideline.
As a master plan community, Paul has told us this doesn't comply with that and that's what we're making it, everybody.
He's telling us it doesn't comply.
He said it doesn't comply with the requirements of a master plan community. It doesn't. And yet, that's what we're going to call this. That's the zoning we're going to give it instead of R four. As I say, this what just upsets me is we don't seem to have any calcium in our backbones up here.
I resent that.
Oh, you resent it all you want, Mary.
I resent you to say that.
Mary, you could resent that. But I have the phone, and I'm talking on the phone right now. The, uh, we haven't followed the rules. And if we're not going to, we're not a very strong council. So you guys, what does you want to do? Uh, it's, I know I'm the only one against it, but I'm the only one here that thinks it's important to follow the general plan and to not label it, uh, the zoning as a master plan community when it doesn't. And Paul's admitted it doesn't.
Mayor, Mr. Mayor, let me quick, I'll make it quick. I resent that indication. I feel this is a good plan. This is something I.
Okay. Paul, did you say this would not have planned development?
No, Mr. Mayor, what I said is that this project does not meet all of your PAD residential design guidelines, but that the ordinance also gives council the authority to grant exceptions on a case-by-case basis where warranted. We went through every exception in the basis for granting those exceptions.
So that's what we're doing.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I've entertained ordinance number one one seven eight point three, please Gloria.
Ordinance number one one seven eight point three nine eight. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance one one seven eight and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from single-family residential to planned area development on property located, located at the northwest corner of Casa Grande Avenue and O'Neill Drive, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I'm moved.
Go ahead.
For the adoption of ordinance number one one seven eight point three nine eight as presented. Second.
Okay, it's been moved. And secondly, Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Partson?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Oh, my, my turn now. Listen, I, uh, I, I think this is a great development. I have nothing against the development. I have it against the zoning that was given it. It doesn't comply exactly with the master plan development as it should, nor does it comply with the limit of not to exceed four point five density. I'm voting no, and I'm wishing in the future some people here would, would, would get a stronger spine and stand up for what's our rules. Maybe we need to have a class on zoning or something. I don't know. But we can't keep giving away stuff. I vote no.
Mayor Potam McRae, I respectfully disagree with Mr. Powell and I wrote yes. Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, next on the agenda is our reports. So I am going to start down here with Julie. So you want to start?
Sure. Um, you know, we had a lot of, go through it too much, but, um, we attended the, um, League of Cities in towns and I just kind of wanted to briefly go over some of the, some of the sessions. I think the sessions were great, um, you know, so kind of briefly, the ones that I attended. We, you know, the, I did attend a census, um, session and, you know, just to remind everyone, you know, how important this is. There's so much going on, you know, with the census.
with the census across the country and the importance of it, so just to let everyone know, there's there's definitely jobs available, they're going to be hiring, I think, thirteen thousand people throughout the state, so if anyone's interested in working for the census, you can apply online at twenty twenty census slash jobs. But I know their their biggest focus, and I think the mayor's on the committee and Steve Turner with me, but their big push really on this is to not throw away the census, that when they get that, when they get the information in the mail, don't throw it away. You know, just make sure you look at the the material, because it's all online. So that's what we're going to have to really push here in Casa Grande, to make sure people go online and and fill out the census. So, you know, a lot of things go in there, I went to a session on the, one that we love talking of, the P S P R S discussion, and and of course, it was really interesting, they talked about making sure that we have a policy with the city, and I know we're working on that, the things that we're working towards, so I was really impressed, Larry, because a lot of things that they said is what we've really been talking about. And we are trying to determine how we can, you know, to establish this policy and how we're going to move forward and and try to reduce that. So what else, let's see, what else did I attend? Elected Women, Donna McBride and I really enjoyed that, you know, how the the growth of of women in elected positions and leadership roles, so we really enjoyed that. We, the other one was on social media, best practices, and as we know, Brett, you probably know a lot about the laws now with social media, it's so complicating, and I know us as elected officials, we don't think about all the things that go into social media, but also the importance on setting a policy and making sure, and I know the city has a policy, but I really think we need to look at best practices and make sure that we have a pretty detailed policy on employees and, you know, elected officials and everything else. So I know a couple of you were in on that session. Recycling, of course, I went to the recycling session with Councilmember Huddleston, and, you know, this is an issue that's everywhere. You know, there's a lot of cities that are running into these issues, but, you know, but what what I what I liked about this expert, and I can't remember where he was from, is, you know, he's saying that because there's so many issues and because, you know, you know, China's not taking the recycled goods, a lot of cities are, we need to find companies here that will take the recycled goods, and and that's happening. You know, that there's going to be some options hopefully in the near future, but I don't think it's going to be that near. But but that was a really good session, too, so that's kind of in general, I think, I got it all. And then, oh, one on the state universities and developing workforces of the future. N A U, A S U, and U of A were there, and they talked about the relationships with cities and community colleges to fill the gap of teacher shortages and nursing and doctor shortages, and trying to come up with creative alternatives to get people certifications while they're in community colleges and do internships and things like that, so that's just can, just really brief, I don't want to go into too much, because I'm sure some of you will talk about it, but but I thought they're they're all these really good sessions, and and I really enjoyed being part of it again.
Pick it back over here.
Okay, I too attended the League of Cities conference and thoroughly enjoyed it, that was the first time I've attended as a council member. Attended classes on water rights, water rights, the drought contingency plan, recycling, also one on city manager style of governing, and I want to compliment our city manager and our staff, they have really kept us updated, I I went through those classes and I got no shocks. I mean, every everything they covered, we've we've discussed and talked about, so I I feel like we are right on top of a lot of those issues. The only other thing, we all got a invitation from Weimar, the Western Panal Chapter of Realtors, and just heads up, what's going on in the real estate community is all these organizations, Weimar, Panal, and also several are up in the Southeast Valley are all merging, that's still in progress, but as a result, we're getting some very quality training and and experiences, so the, this this one's a visit with our legislators. I've I've been told all of our local area legislators will be there to give us briefings and entertain questions, so I would encourage, if you have, if you have that day off, plan on going, that's all.
I really don't have anything to report, because unfortunately, at the last minute, I had to bow out of the the concert, I missed it really good, and they're all really, always really good, so you'll fill me in on that, so that's about all I have.
I'm also sad to say, I didn't get to go for physical limitations, and so I hope you guys learned a lot, and I look forward to speaking with you about it, and I'm also going to watch some online. And also, I'm going to hopefully get to, got invited to a thing, I don't know if you guys did with Michael Crowe this week, because college football's back in action finally, and so if you have anything you want to say, let me know, and I'll see if I can put in a word for our city, so we can work with A S U and try to get some educational opportunities here in town, so. So that's all I have.
Yeah, the conference, hats off to the mayor, he was on a panel that I was honored to moderate on the homelessness with three other cities, and by far, the comments throughout the entire conference was about how realistic Casa Grande has taken to take care of our problem in-house, and so I was really proud to be part of that. I had the opportunity to to go to the luncheon with all the youth members that were there, that was interesting. And then, the one thing that I walked away with was one of our keynote speakers, who was the burn victim, and he talked about being kind and respectful and being civil, and I think that we all needed to hear that message, so I thought that was really good. A couple other things, Panal Partnership, thanks to Larry for representing us last Friday, when all the city managers gave an update, he did an excellent job. I think he took a little bit of ribbing from the city of Maricopa, but he held his own. And then I also attended the airport pancake breakfast Saturday morning, and got a chance to talk to a lot of the local pilots. And we had pilots there, student pilots from France and the U K, that I had opportunity to talk to. And then while I was there, there was a large helicopter that came in that was part of Border Patrol that was on their way to Florida, and they remembered our stop because of the burritos at the Barca Cafe. So that was really interesting to talk to them, and they were fueling up and then eating there before heading out. They were from San Diego going to Florida, so that's all I have.
Mr. Powell?
Well, we missed you guys, both of you, I wish you could have been there.
Thank you.
It was a good conference, and we learned a lot, and the, this week, we got the the water plan we've talked, that I've talked about approved by Panal County Farm Bureau, instead of just our local farm bureau. And I got to talk to Gozar. And maybe the highlight, and a couple of you are going to be surprised, when when they got through with cinnamon speech up there, and they started into the awards, I knew I wasn't getting one, so I decided I'll go ahead and start for home, so I start back down and come around the corner, and there's Krispy Kreme, and a couple of people are talking to her, and so I introduced myself, and I said, I've worked with your guy, Gary Gold, oh, he is so good, and whatever. She was the sweetest thing, and I told her how proud I was of her being somebody that can work across the aisle, and and how important that was, but, and she told me, if I ever need anything, just ask, so. But the, she was, yeah, water, that's that's one of the questions, but the, she said, in your Casa Grande? And I said, yes, she said, that's where I'm going right now. So you guys on the cell tower, that those people didn't have, she went from there out to there, and then she went to a veterans' field, which she's really high on, yeah. So it it was a thrill for me to get to to talk to her and 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 have an ace of spades that I can get whatever I need from her when I need. I don't, I'm kidding, I'm, it was just, it was just fun to meet her.
Okay. I too attended the the League of Cities, and I think we had a good turnout, I think it was a good, good week, I won't belabor it anymore since everybody's already talked about it. But it's always a good time to get together with our fellow electeds, as well as our other city, city directors. Just want to remind everybody that there is a request for information, or it's actually a request for interest on the land, the city-owned land, it's on the south side, and there's a piece right near downtown, across from St. Anthony's Church. So that that is out there on our website right now, so if anybody is interested in in just even inquiring about it, sign up, it doesn't cost you anything. There'll be another one that's coming out here in the next couple of weeks or so. I want to put Stephen on the, on the hot seat over there, but since he's the one putting it together, I gave you two weeks, Stephen.
Hopefully this week.
All right, on the buildings, so our auditorium and the gym will be the request for interest in that regard, so a lot of things that we're, we want to try and get outside influence on, and help us figure out what we're going to do with them. A bunch of ribbon cuttings last week, I had Copper Sky Assisted Living, which is, again, assisted living facility, beautiful facility, if you want to go take a look at it, it's back behind Thirsty Donkey, back in the back there, in that community. And beautiful building, very Cape Cod-ish, not very unlike Southwest type look, but it was very, very, very nice, yeah. And then we also attended One Stop Beauty Supply out at the, at the Promenade Mall, it's a new retailer here in town. If you need wigs or you need anything, you know.
Toothpaste?
They, they actually cater to people who have cancer, so when you have treatments and you lose your hair, you, they, they have, they have everything you need there. Also went to an announcement, Premier Auto just landed the first foreign new car dealership in the city of Casa Grande.
Since the eighties.
Since Volkswagen, before, since Volkswagen left, but this is brand new, Scott Lehman.
That's going to be great.
Yeah, this is pretty exciting for the city of Casa Grande. Also, I had left some of these on the back, these are the new growing Horizon Economic Development books, so if you want to take one, they're free, we'll charge for them, and and it'll tell you a lot about about your city and and some of the business and industry that we have here. Anallhila Senior Citizen Center is going to be rehabbing the old Wendy's out at the, at the outlet malls. They were given the Wendy's out there by the current owner, so they actually have purchased it, and now will be actually setting it up for their Meals on Wheels to cover all of those surrounding communities, so it'll be where where they're going to cook cook their meals, so I think that that was pretty exciting.
That's very cool.
And then I also had meetings with some investment people last week, this Han Development Group, and they're actually looking for, to come in and build affordable housing and worker housing, so hopefully that, hopefully that will will happen. Anall partnership, I won't hit on that, home building, the Home Builders Roundtable we have set up for this this Thursday. We've invited the home builders in, and we're going to sit down with them and do a little round table and and try and get some feedback from the builders. Brown Homes has a ground opening, reopening that is this coming Saturday, they're going to be out where they're doing the big R V garages, they're going to have a.
Courts.
Yeah, they're going to food food trucks and all kinds of stuff out there, so we'll be doing that. I'm also touring the Southwest Gas, the new Southwest Gas building this this Wednesday. So busy week, one other thing I wanted to remind everybody of, this is, this is the the See Click Fix website, it's on, it's posted on our website, if you use your smartphone, you have to download the app, but when you see a pothole, if you see graffiti, you just take a picture of it, and then you, it it notes the location, the G P S location, and gets sent automatically to the city. So please take a look at it, it's See Click Fix, is that dot com? Anyway, it's a, it's an app that you can download.
Just Google it, and it'll come up.
Yeah, from the city's website.
It's great, that's going to be great.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's awesome, so that's all I have. Anybody else have any other comments, questions, okay? Then we'll stand recessed, and we're going to break into executive session. Give us five minutes to clear the room.
I saw move.
We get out of recess, because you want to discuss that, we just need to remember to do a motion.
Okay.